Check, in terms of your filming.
Yeah.
Um. Surprised you brought a camera here and that's not, um, not normally how these meetings are held in terms of the members of the public filming them?
How do members of the public normally film them?
Well, members of the public don't.
Because?
Because this is a presentation to members of the public invited by.
So it's a, so it's a meeting, open to members of the public?
Yes.
So it's legally now allowed for people to film it?
Um. In terms of certainly the people presenting, because it's design development and this is the early stage, they had not expected it to be filmed and.
So what are you going to say that you don't want members of the public to see?
Uh, nothing, it's how it gets, because this is design development, right, in final design. That's where they're, and this, um, so there's nothing which, because clearly it's an open public meeting. But it's the filming of it which was recently concerned with, with the architects in particular because they want, they want to evolve the design, whether it's all to public consultation rather than having someone presented eventually to an audience, to a pitch or something like that.
I, I don't understand your concern, this is a meeting held in public and we're legally allowed to film.
I will have my own idea then, but I'm sorry.
I mean, if there's something that the architect wants to say to camera afterwards, to qualify whatever you're talking about, he can happy to have that, do not try and constrain him to go, well, I've got no intention of making it.
On one hand, I don't, I don't think there is anything much, but I was just wanting to make sure that, the architect wanted to make sure that it was understood this was design development, where all of it will be adjusted as a result of public consultation, public input, rather than that it is ever doing in other ways. I will continue to have a.
Would, would, would you not be making that clear, um, to members of the public here anyway?
I will try to create a nice style. Welcome everyone, uh, this is a presentation for my, the reserve matters application related to phase one, which is a relevant part of phase one of Barton Park. Uh, I see somebody has a, a video camera, um, I just want to remind, uh, the person who's recording the meeting that the, there is a protocol which allows you to record proceedings, um, but can I remind you, you're not allowed to disrupt the meeting and that, I suppose effectively, Chair, I would stop the meeting if I feel that recording is being disruptive. And you are required to not edit the recording in a way that leads to misinterpretation of proceedings and to avoid recording members in public unless they are addressing the meeting. Anyway, welcome to the meeting, I'm going to hand over to the, um, team to text the presentation and after that I think we'll be on to the next question.
Thank you, Paul Commonford from ACOM on behalf of Hill, um, the house builder. Um, this evening, this is about the first phase of homes at Barton Park. Some of you may know me, we've had previous, um, briefings such as this on the last one with enabling infrastructure, uh, in terms of site preparation. The site activities, um, are commencing and more, uh, next week will be taking place in terms of visible activities and in terms of getting a temporary, um, construction access in. But tonight is about the first phase of the homes, um, and it is about an hour, we've got 20, 25 minutes perhaps in terms of our presentation and then have best afterwards as voices to do questions following that. I think, um, just a quick refresher in terms of what is phase one, we'll go over that. We'll talk about, uh, the number of homes and where the red line for this reserve matters application will fall, uh, and the time scale for that application. We'll also look in closer detail at some of the relationships of phase one in terms of proximity to the A40, to the Linear Park and look at, um, the types of houses and apartments that are proposed to come forward and, uh, some of the relationships in terms of mix and the tenure of those new homes. We'll also, um, then move forward into what the homes will look like, emerging proposals of what the homes will look like and work in progress, but it's important to start that dialogue now, which is what this evening is about, so I'll hand over to you, Jamie.
Okay, and so my name is Jamie Wilding, I'm a senior developer manager for Hill. And for those of you who, who don't know anything about Hill, we're a family, um, home business but started up completely from scratch back in 1999 and we're now growing to an organisation that builds over 1,200 new homes across the south east of England every year. And, and up on, on the screen is our vision statement. And in terms of our geographical location, our head office, we're, we're at Wolfham Abbey in Essex, but we've also got regional offices out in Theorem, Norfolk, in Cambridge, um, in Gatwick, which is our southern region, and then our closest office to Oxford is located in Bista. And obviously the, all the markers show the breadth of all the projects that we're going to undertake across the south east. And so up on the screen, I'm going to show you just some examples of some projects that we're undertaking recently, just to, one to show you the, the diversity of the type of projects that we do. We're very design led as an organisation and we pride ourselves on treating every, uh, site that we undertake on its merits and we, we don't have a suite of standard house types, unlike many of the national house builders, every scheme is architecture led and we design it on its merits with a bespoke set of house types, but. So on this project, in terms of being design led, and we're going to introduce you in a sec, in a second, we've got two architects working on this theme and, and we selected two architects because of the scale of 237 homes to add to the interest of, of the architecture and really differentiate our products and, and the two architects we've selected were Paul O'Tonan-Edwards and Alison Brooks, who we've worked successfully with over the years and, and both practices won a, a huge amount of awards for their work and we're very confident with the level of quality that Barton Park deserves. So Paul touched on it, but in terms of Barton Park governance, um, I'll touch on the next couple of sites that is, is worth reminding everyone, but, um, the, the lead developer on the site is Barton Oxford LOP, they've got the outline planning consent back in October 2013 and then achieved reserve matters for, um, the primary infrastructure works and the landscape and public roadworks in February this year. We are the first house builder and we're very, we're delighted to be selected as the first house builder on, on the ground at Barton Park and so we'll be delivering the first phase, which has the ability to go up to 237 homes. Okay, go on, the slide. So we're showing here the, the overall outline master plan that was consented to the site back in October 2013, hopefully everyone can see, but the outline in red there, um, basically shows the, the scope of the land parcels that we're developing and we're, over the coming slides, we're trying to tell you about our emerging proposals. And I'd just like to point out that, um, we exchanged contracts back in December last year, so we're, we're broadly about half the way on the way to, um, submission of our reserve matters, so everything you see here isn't fixed in stone, we're very much evolving the design, uh, week by week and we're now moving into the period where we're undertaking a number of public consultation events of which this meeting holds part of that strategy. So I'll hand over to Theresa.
So good evening, I'm Theresa Water from Paul O'Tonan-Edwards Architects. Um, what you see up on the screen now and as, um, Paul said, um, this phase of Barton is, um, will be a reserve matters application and so evidently we work within the both parameter plans for the overall site and the design of garden plans. And just as a reminder, just, um, starting from the top left, um, it's really, um, an area showing where the building zones are of our phase, but the next one is the density and you can see the darker colours, um, indicate a denser, um, scheme, so that we're working within those parameters. Bottom left is land use, effectively, um, everything on our site in phase one is residential. The, um, sort of brown box is the commercial centre, which you see, then that's outside of our site. And then the other map in the, um, middle there, on the bottom right, is about movement and access and evidently where, um, the roads are actually outside our parcels, so they're being, there's what Paul referred to as a start on site now, so we're working very much within the existing roads and access and network that the overall master plan has developed. And as well as that, it's very vague, I'm sorry you can't see, but there's a whole series of design codes, development specifications, the Barton area action plans, all of these form the sort of the planning policy documents that we're working within and developing the schemes in. So, um, our vision, our team's vision is very much building on the parameters of the document, but it's also tempting to draw on the character and scale of central Oxford's neighbourhoods and the neighbouring communities of Northwym Barton, Hennington. Um, however, we realise that there's a need for its own architectural identity and it must be clear. It's intended as a very sustainable urban extension for Oxford and so it is very much a walkable community, a townscape within a landscape. Exemplary architecture in the landscape that work with each other to create a very clear sense of place and all of the homes are designed to respond to their specific location in the master plan, so every condition, whether it's looking to the south over the A40 or north over Bathwater Brook, it's, it's really about making places where people feel at home and want to live and connecting to neighbouring communities.
Okay, as part of delivering that, uh, vision for sustainable urban extension for Oxford, our strategy around sustainability, firstly to say that all of the homes at Barton Park on the first phase will be delivered to co-sustainable homes level four. And the way we go about approaching that, from our, from our experience, is we really concentrate on the, the building fabric as our first, um, protocol, um, by introducing high levels of thermal insulation, basically to reduce the energy demand on the properties. We supplement that by, um, renewable technology and on the scheme, 20% of the energy demands will be met by renewable sources. All of the homes on the scheme will be, um, lifetime homes compliant and a key theme as a part of our housing typologies, which we'll move on to, is that they, they will have, you know, generous, uh, dedicated home working spaces, as we see that as a, as a key trend for, for modern housing. High levels of daylight and maximizing dual aspects on apartments, which again we'll, we'll show you as we move through the, the presentation, and equally the scheme will be connected into the, the sustainable urban drainage system, which is, um, being installed by the LOP along the Linear Park.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You talked about the 20% of energy demand from renewable sources, so you're obviously very welcome. Uh, have you any idea at this stage what the, um, the increase in carbon emissions per housing unit or something will be on, on the site or, or not?
Um, I, I think we're working through our, our energy strategy at the moment, so I don't think I'll be able to put a figure to that, um, I mean, where we're broadly at on, on our scheme design is, is around master plan levels and we've got some early typologies that we're going to show you some, you know, indicative elevations, so we're doing all of our energy modelling that as we speak now, until the end of the month, so, um, it's probably a tricky question. Yeah, but you know, we're, we're exploring a number of, um, renewable solutions at the moment as well, to, to incorporate into the scheme.
What does dedicated home working space actually involve?
Um, we've got lots of studies, um, basically, um, you see in our housing typologies with, with really as, I mean, we see it as a, as a developer a lot now, but a lot more people are working from home, not all the time, but some people work one day a week from home.
They're working on having computers and this type of, this very dedicated space for them.
So, you know, with, with themes that run through our house types and, you know, it's having a, a home working space to study, but maybe it's at the ground floor of the front of the property, helps activity and overlooking during the daytime, so, yeah.
Does that mean that if you've got a three bed house, you also have an extra space additional to study?
Not, not always, not always, yeah, but certainly some, some of them are, are very generous in size that they have. Yeah, um, so moving on to our, um, indicative programme, so we're working through, as I mentioned right at the beginning, we, we'll be doing two rounds of public consultation and we've got our, our first event coming up this, this Saturday, Barton Neighbourhood Centre, and next Tuesday night, we're, we're at Northway Community Centre, where we'll be looking to set the first feedback or report from, from members of the public and then we'll be going back through another round of consultation through June. Our ambition is to submit our reserve matters application, um, in July and then we will start house building, basically we, we buy the land when the first phase of the infrastructure is done, so we're looking to start the site after, after that is, um, completed.
Right, so the next few slides really take you through how we've, um, developed the master plan from the reference scheme, um, in terms of the outline application. And the first thing we always start with is really sort of what are the constraints and opportunities that the site has to offer, and I'm really sorry that my pointer doesn't seem to work that far, but, um, just to locate you, you see the grey diagonal line is, is the A40, I'm sure you're all familiar with that. And evidently, um, the great thing about the site is to the north, we've got the whole farm and Greenbelt Band, we've got the Linear Park to the south of that, now we've got some wonderful existing greenways and pedestrian footpaths that go north, south through the site. Evidently, the A40 is a challenge, um, and we come in off the A40, as you can see, and just where that red signal is. Um, and I think what this really shows is, um, how this Barton, this, this master plan is such a connecting piece, um, actually linking, um, all those areas of Barton with Northway and Hennington and it's, um, and it's actually just, it looks like it should really be there in terms of finishing off this piece of jigsaw. And it's, and it's really, um, up to how we develop the master plan to see how we can make those connections with those places on Oxford and also make this a place in itself with having its own identity. And so what we've done in terms of our phase is we've considered it in what we call five character areas and, um, so evidently we've got the, um, homes along the A40, that's number one. There's a primary street that runs through the master plan, area two is what is, the master plan is identified as a primary square, it's where there was anticipated to be a commercial centre at the heart of the new Barton Park. Um, three is the Linear Park, of the accommodation that faces out looking onto the Linear Park. Four is, um, the area around Greenway, one of the existing, um, greenways and north-south routes through the site. And then five is a place that we've created within one of our own parcels and it's just a way of breaking down the whole to look at how each of these areas have a different identity by virtue of where they sit on the site and their immediate relationships to neighbouring areas. And so this slide also takes those five character areas and shows some points of reference in terms of, um, character and scale. The A40 primary street junction, which is part of the Northway quarter, we feel, um, has a kind of scale of streets that it has to respond to, the A40 is obviously quite broad and the buildings that are, um, facing the A40 have to, they benefit from the south orientation, but they also have to deal with the acoustic issues of the A40, so they're designed very carefully to provide variety, um, but with landscape interspersed with built form to create this, this very, um, a kind of significant edge. The commercial square, which is a landscape space with terrace houses overlooking at the, the Linear Park edge, which in itself has different characters, it has crescent, it has detached homes, it has apartments. Um, the Greenway, which is a major north-south, um, landscape boulevard with houses lying each side. And then mews, courts and lanes, which are much more intimate in scale, two-storey houses primarily, um, and then the sort of paved surfaces and mews character, which is slightly more urban. And so this slide is called movement, which is very much a kind of planning term, but I like to just, uh, call this slide making good streets and building on the principles of the street networks that we've inherited from the outline master plan. So the red dashed line indicates the primary street, which is already under construction and this, this creates the opportunity for a crescent, a really significant, um, built, this sort of set piece architecture that takes advantage of that crescent shape. And then a, a series of secondary streets and mews that add, uh, grain and a different relationship to the buildings around them, so it's about making, um, streets and buildings that are attuned to each of the character areas and creates a kind of layering of landscape and different kinds of movements, such as cycle and walking. So the, um, I'm just going to talk about some specific parts of the site which offer different, uh, constraints and opportunities. So the first one is the A40 frontage and the diagram on the bottom left illustrates the, the conditions, it's obviously a major point of access into the site, um, there will be, um, acoustic issues to deal with from traffic, all the traffic will be slowed with the new intersection, there will be speed restrictions around the entrance, um, cycle, pedestrian and bus for, um, public access, but there are also great opportunities and I think it's a really, we as a design team think it's a very interesting challenge, there are very few examples anywhere in the UK of a really successful architectural response to a major suburban arterial road and so creating that transition between a major road into a quieter residential neighbourhood is a real challenge. So our design response is to create a gateway to the new neighbourhood, um, to deal with noise, to create active frontages at ground level, so, um, apartments will have front doors and front gardens, um, there, there are podium elevated gardens above some of the parking, so parking is concealed in the apartments. The bedrooms are all located away from the A40 and the main living spaces, with dual aspect living rooms, private amenity space and a kind of variation in the massing of the buildings along the A40.
Could you, could you explain what the suns are, please?
That's, that's just, uh, really showing the orientations of the, the, you know. Northerners, June or November. So the sun rises in the east and sets in the west, so it's just how, where the suns.
That's going to continue then, the movements of the sun, or?
Excuse me, can I ask you a question? Is, is it about to ask a question? Um, you were talking about noise nuisance.
Sorry, Georgina.
Oh, sorry.
We'll, we'll take questions later on.
Oh, boy, I didn't ask you, I was asking this lady here.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm in charge of the meeting.
Oh, unfortunately.
Do you want to carry on?
Okay, yeah, happy to take questions here, next slide. So this image shows the general massing of the master plan, so you can see that four stories and three stories is the general height of the scheme with some, one element going up to five stories, this is all completely within the outline master plan parameters. And you start to see the, um, the variety that's created with the massing of the blocks along the A40 with canopies of trees and landscape figures penetrating into the site and kind of sweep up the primary road to form that crescent that overlooks the landscape. So in terms of the Linear Park, this is a fantastic opportunity and it's not the same all the way along, we wanted to make sure that each, um, frontage to the Linear Park responds to its specific place, so each, um, element that you see there, the diagram, the sort of lap lines indicate the different kinds of frontages, so there are apartments on the west side, there are two blocks framing the crescent, there are, um, single family homes which run along towards the east and these single family homes frame the, the kind of threshold to the park from the Greenway. So the, um, these, the pedestrian cycle links are sort of reinforced with our scheme and to provide that kind of public access to the park from, um, from the, sort of the streets that are providing access to the homes. So here's an image looking sort of south east, um, across the, uh, crescent formed by the primary street and you can see the little kind of, um, sort of quarter shaped central mews area beyond the primary crescent and then two buildings that frame each side of the landscape and beyond, this sort of empty site beyond are the, the outline master plan future phases. And then here's a view looking south across Bathwater Brook and the new landscape towards some of the houses, so looking to Brook, terrace houses framing each side of the, um, Greenway and just a general scale enassing that indicates the, the kind of character that we're trying to achieve.
So this then has translated into a masterplan. And so you can see the A40 area, access area, which Alison described, and also the apartments framing the crescent on the Linear Park edge, as well as the houses to the east. As well as that, we have that strong north-south Greenway, where what we've done is providing strong frontages, the homes, the houses along the east and west edges of that. And then back into our parcel here where we've got the mews development, we've got what we call glaston gardens. And there's a really, there's an opportunity there for an incidental sort of shared amenity space, which is for, I mean residents, it's a public space, residents and others alike. So how does all of that work? So the next few slides are very diagrammatic, just really takes you through some of the principles. And this indicates the tenure mix. So the pinky colour is the private market sale accommodation and the blue is the affordable accommodation. So you can see we've got spread across the site and a mix of both houses and flats in both as well.
So it's 40% for both.
The next diagram just shows you the story heights. So effectively, the lighting colour below the buildings, but you can see the only five storey marker building at the A40 entrance, that's the only five storey building. Then we go down to the blue, which is four storey, and the darker green, which is three, and there are some two-storey houses as well. So effectively, that's all working within the parameter plan and the AOD heights that have been set out by the outline masterplan. And then we've got, showing the diagram, showing a mix of houses and flats. And as you can see in the colours, it varies from one-two bed flats, two-to-five bed houses across the site. And effectively, the apartments are generally concentrated both along the A40 and then in those two buildings either side of the crescent, as well as along Primary Street.
So we're very much at the early stages of the design and we're starting to build a palette of materials or research of palette of materials that we think would be appropriate and draw on the various residential traditions that Oxford is blessed with. So the materials are generally brick, which is durable, long-lasting, long-wearing. We're looking at tonnes of brick which one finds in Oxford context. Potential for accents such as checkerboards of brick, a kind of high-quality base or special surrounds to entrances, and then integrating all this with the pagan and landscape material. And there will be opportunities to accentuate front doors and entrances, covered porches, corner windows and metalwork that brings detailed character to each of the houses.
Okay, for our vision of the homes, and we're looking to deliver a good range of types and sizes of homes. As I mentioned right at the beginning, but there's no off-the-shelf house types here. It's quite an interesting scheme for us to design because there's lots of edges to our parcels that are very different outlooks. Key features of our homes, we're looking to maximise, as I said, around separate study and hobby spaces, general space standards. Our homes typically, when you compare to other house builders, are a little bit bigger. And that's because we pride ourselves on the internal layout and design of them and have good things like good functional storage in ours. And as you touched on, materials, but we're looking at, you know, a familiar palette of materials, but expressed in a contemporary manner is our ambition. And energy efficient, reducing energy consumption and utility bills.
So we're just going to take you through a kind of snapshot of the very early developments that we're producing in terms of the architectural form and the planning of the buildings. So these are the two small buildings, four-storey apartments that have eight flats per block. So these are planned around the central core, they're two-bed flats. The bedrooms, you can see in the plan, the ornaments line are facing the north. And the living area, which you can see spans from south to north. So we want to gain the solar, you know, the benefit of solar gain and sunlight on the south side of the blocks into the main living spaces, but allow windows to be opened and people to have amenity space away from the noisy A40. So they're, you know, very nice dual aspect flats with lots of storage and only two flats per core. So they're, I mean, ideally they can walk up and the front porch and entrances are articulated with covered porches.
Next slide. Yeah, this is, I mean, very similar, this is on the west side of the A40, but it follows the same principles, narrative is exactly the same in the sense that all the bedrooms, none of the bedrooms are on the A40 elevation. And the living room is actually through a living room because again, it's that challenge where we have the sun and the southern aspect to the, to the south on the A40 side, but we have also the issue of the noise conditions. So we've got three living rooms. And then there are the service rooms, that kitchen and bathrooms on that frontage.
And so this is the marker building at the entrance to the site from the A40. And this is quite a special block because it has the largest number of apartments and obviously the largest number of cars. So there's a podium that conceals the parking. So the plan in the top left corner, you can see the parking at ground floor level, but all around the perimeter of the parking are flats, some with direct access, they're on the front doors or the communal entrance to the apartments. And it's a mix of a large apartment block, a small one, and then two houses. And all residents will have access to the podium gardens, which you can see the plan on the right.
So very good to first forward.
Yes.
Yeah.
And all of the bedrooms in these blocks are also designed to be facing east or west, not onto the A40.
So how many flats are there in the, for example, left-hand block there? Four?
Yeah. It's twenty-eight. Yeah. This is just, you know, we're starting, there's a lot of work to do still on developing the elevations, but this is quite an interesting location in the site. And it's, as you can see, the key drawing just to the right of the top of the drawing, and it's the crescent. And it's where we have our first houses as we come in from the A40. But actually, they're on the primary street, so they're on quite a main road. They get the wonderful outlook of the Linear Park, but they are north-facing. So quite a few challenges there. And actually, although be it their front doors are on Primary Street, vehicular access is from the back, from the news, the rear of the site. And it's that challenge of how you again, design something which is north-facing but still gets some sunlight. And so these have rear-back gardens, which are south-facing, and also second-floor terraces, which go right the way through the house. So where you see those balconies with holes, that's actually a terrace at that level and you can see sky through those holes. So it has to be a robust elevation, but actually it still has to look like a house. So we're working with those challenges.
So this, this next slide shows our buildings in contact with the future landscaping of Phase One of Brook, framed by the two four-storey apartment buildings on either side and the crescent as the backdrop. And one of the apartments is affordable and one is private. And they're designed so that the elevations open up towards the park and provide really great balconies on the end elevation. So each apartment acts as a balcony and some landscape.
It's really important for us to stress the whole scheme is designed to be tenure-blind. So from the outside, all of the materials and detailing, and I think that is the best example we can give that, you know, you wouldn't be able to tell which is probably affordable part of the building.
We've also got houses, again, a few of the key, these are the houses that face onto Primary Square. And there was always an ambition from the outlined masterplan that the ground floor, ground first floor of these should be raised and that there should be a potential for perhaps some conversion to some commercial or office use for those houses. And so the plan on the right shows how we've accommodated that. You can either have, as a house, it's either a large entrance hall or a study area, or that can be taken over by some commercial entity or, you know, some, I mean, hairdresser or something. And we've got to, so the whole thing is, it's almost like a shop front house onto that Primary Square.
And these are the Greenway houses, which are terrace houses and they run north-south to either side of the Greenway. And they have parking for two cars on plots. So the large opening at the ground floor to the right side of each house, that's where two cars can park. The big window to the left is the ground floor home office or study. And these also have really long gardens to the rear and dormer, sort of that roof articulated with large dormer windows and, yeah, master bedrooms or family roofs on the top floor.
I think this next slide's just, it's really very much work in progress. It's just showing how we're trying to really optimise the location design of each house. So for example, the bottom drawing, the bottom houses are the ones onto the Linear Park, but they have a great opportunity for great long west views. So how you might capture that with having a corner window. And it's again, so it's just really trying to make the design of each house very specific to its particular location. So we're just working with that.
And those detached houses then?
Yes, those detached houses.
And these are the Waterside village, so the key plan in the top right corner, you can see there to the east, north-east of the, of the Greenway. And these houses overlook the Linear Park. So they have fantastic north-facing views, but are also designed to take advantage of the south orientation and south-facing rear gardens. So these are single-family houses, again, they have a ground floor study overlooking the streets and large bedrooms in the roof articulated with dormer windows.
I think the next slide really just shows that it's very much work in progress. We've got lots of plates to spin and lots of things to continue to develop.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Any thoughts about green roofs, Paul?
Yeah, indeed, yeah. You would have noticed particularly on our apartment buildings, we've got flat roofs. Well, there will be likely to be some introduction of photovoltaic panels in there, but equally we'll have some green roof as well.
In space standards, are they parkourist or greater value?
Greater value in areas, it depends on some of the house types. But certainly, you know, we've got examples of some of our three-bed houses, 165 square metres, so you have 1800 square foot, which is very generous for three-bed houses.
And you've got balconies as an east space, sounds like an east space in each, each house?
Yeah, very much so, yeah. I mean, that, the crescent one here, it's really the same, but, so these guys around here, this is their back garden, but equally, we've given them some balcony and roof terrace areas so they can make the best of the view to the north as well.
Right.
So I think it's balconies, patios, terraces and gardens. Everybody has some points to look at.
Great.
Mike? Thank you, Jeff. Can you imagine this, Phase One is a dense one of the closest parts of the scheme. Can you calculate your distance, per hectare or whatever, whatever you want? Well, yes, overall, it's Phase One.
It rated various from 65 to 70 dph in pockets to lower than that, according to the parameter plan.
Is it affordable, would you say, or never affordable, whether it's?
I don't know whether, which side of that we are at the moment, but I don't know. It's probably far away, probably not far away from that.
Yes, that's the important thing in terms of what the city targets across the scheme. Okay. A number of the dwellings facing the A40 have habitable rooms on the A40 side, on the south side essentially. Presumably, they can't open their windows to the A40.
They have a kitchen. They have a through kitchen living room that goes onto the A40.
Well, that's a habitable room, yeah.
Yes, yeah, that is. And but they obviously have an openable window on the north side.
On the north side, but not on the south side?
We think we're doing our noise.
Noise assessment.
Test and that will actually.
The point of my question is, have you identified any sufficient danger of traffic noise to need or house ventilation or anything of that sort?
Yeah, I think we took that decision probably about four to six weeks ago, after we'd done our noise survey. But to take a stance, we couldn't have any bedrooms along the A40 frontage. And, you know, the dual aspect living room actually gives quite, you know, a great amount of light into that, the quality of space within that area is pleasant. In terms of ventilation, for them, for them units along the front, they've got, we're introducing a kind of ventilation, heat recovery units to deal with the ventilation. So there's no background ventilation being.
So some of them need or not, so. Final question, I noticed that, I will let you ask, make it into a question, are any of the affordable houses, I see there are on the A40, a lot of them, but are any of them overlooking water amongst those detached houses?
Do you want to go first?
Is there any overlooking the water?
Yep, very much so. I think, say, we're, we're, on the A40 frontage, we're pretty much 50/50 in terms of affordable, private, private, affordable, private, affordable. And then overlooking the Linear Park, we're going to be apartment building that as well.
That's an affordable block?
That is, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, two questions. First was about the lifetime homes and how many of the properties at the moment would be, say, wheelchair accessible? So how many could accommodate wheelchair? So somebody's been moved in and then needed to use a wheelchair later in life, are all the living space is able to negotiate with the door frames? I mean, is that?
So 100%, 100% of the homes are lifetime homes. 5% of the dwellings were designed to be fully wheelchair adaptable.
Can I ask a question also about cycling? You should indicative cycling routes.
Yeah.
And it seemed that it was rather secure to go around, going up around the, the, the ledge space, yeah. I just wondered how safe the main roads would be, seem to be for family cycling and things like that.
We got with, this in the last reserve, which is a dual-use arrangement.
Twenty miles an hour.
Yeah, we're trying not to have a dual voice to try and, you know, so it's a bit.
So there's the, there's the main, the main street, if you like, and then there are all the routes all set up, um, east-west as well, whether you fancy going through the park or along the A40 or through the Primary Street, there are numerous routes that connect and make sure that can happen. I think, I think what we've tried to do is, obviously, we're, we're working, our red minds with lots of consented, and the Linear Park and the Primary Street is maximise our connectivity in coordination with them, them states.
Andrew, another question.
Thanks, Paul. It's two questions, I mean, it's coming back to Mike's question about the cycling of the affordable housing compared to the, whatever the opposite is, unaffordable, I think. Is there any particular reason that you said that would be tenure-blind, why all of the affordable are in blocks and all the unaffordable, the market are in blocks? I mean, I can see why it appears for the apartment block, that would be okay, but with the houses, was that your decision?
Yeah, well, it's kind of why, why some of the land structure, the affordable housing, we're delivering on behalf of Oxford City Council. So basically, we transfer three mould of the land back to them, so we can't have any crisscrossing over, so.
Thanks.
My second question was about the public conversations, it's extremely important. How widely advertised are those schemes?
Yeah, over the weekend, 2,600 flyers went out in Northway, Barton, it's a master, it's a heading term. The Northway ones are coming, the Northway ones are coming Tuesday, Wednesday, because the Barton one is on Saturday, so that happened at the weekend. And the Northway ones are going to be distributed over the next 48 hours. So because it's next Tuesday.
Could we ask a question, could we ask questions please?
I'm sure you can, shall I just?
Because we actually live in Northway, so it would be good if we could ask a question.
And then there will be, then there's an article in the Oxford Mail as well. And there are posters around the site advertising, these are famous, as with the previous events.
Did you say the sun, do you mean?
Well, there's posters at Barton, as you said, on the Barton Road, for example, but project updates, inviting people to come along and discuss.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Okay, open up.
Could, Georgina? You spoke about, let me just come a bit closer. You spoke about fronting, sorting out the houses facing the A40 so that noise nuisance was reduced. But have you come over to Northway to listen to the noise? Because the noise on our green space, on our houses' face, because I got someone to record the noise, is over 90 decibels from that A40. Now, those trees were planted by Jane Cox. They were won in a competition in the late 70s. And they were planted and they've grown all those years for environmental and ecological reasons. And they've been a brilliant noise barrier. So you've done all that, but you haven't really thought about, have you come to Northway? Have you heard the noise? My residents, this lady here can't sleep at night because of the noise. The houses fronting Foxwood Drive because that barrier has been broken down. They're now listening to noise. So it seems to be, everything seems to be about Barton, when the decibel level is well above acceptable limits. Yeah, okay.
I mean, what I understand is that the, from the junction, the new junction, which leaves inspiring a green road area now, I'm under traffic reservation orders, drop to 50 miles an hour, which actually would assume a reduction in noise, I think, on the wire.
Yeah, but it still goes on 24 hours a day, especially at night, you've got the noise coming along there.
What I would say is that, you know, that that will be an improvement on the current situation.
But why were trees knocked down in the first place when they were a really brilliant noise barrier? There's not much difference in noise between 50 and 70 miles an hour, because I researched it.
The Link Road bustling into Northway has meant that there has been some removal of trees.
Which has caused devastation and noise to the estate. Sorry.
And my understanding, I'm looking across here with technical experts, but the trees are not particularly good noise barriers.
Yes, they are, they are. All the research, excuse me, Roy, you've not done five healthy trees. Roy, you haven't done your research. We've done our research and trees are a brilliant noise barrier. And they reduce noise pollution at night.
But there would be lots of trees because you've took central reservation to our side and one back side.
It's not a shouting match, but we know our research. I'm really sorry, you do not, you have not researched it.
I'll also say, we haven't got technical noise experts here tonight. But what we're trying to do is to obviously implement the permission and the order that talks about the town green and the fact that the Link Road was confirmed, so...
But I'm going to judicial review.
This, probably not for tonight, all of those discussions.
No, but I'm going to judicial review.
If that process is still open.
Excuse me, if it's accepted because I found new information, if my town green is, excuse me, Roy, I'm talking. If it's accepted, then you'll have to look for an alternative route. Yeah, but he just mentioned it.
Yeah, well, perhaps we'll pick it up when we come to speak, have a conversation next.
You will have a fight on your hands trying to get through our green space. Okay, thank you.
But it seems to be you're ignoring the noise, what is coming over to us on Northway. You know, everything, oh yes, we do over there, but nothing is being done for the noise over there. You won't be able to sit in the garden in summer.
What I'm saying to you is that that noise is already...
No, it doesn't, Roy.
Not true, it's not it is now.
No, it doesn't, Roy, you do not live there.
You can't sleep in my house for a few nights and see.
It's just because you're supposed to be our councillor and you've done everything to destroy our estate and bring noise nuisance and disruption to the residents. It's disgraceful.
Other questions for members?
All I can say, all I can say, sir, is that the question of the trees, it just doubles up appointments, and others have made it for several years. Those trees that are on the A40 already, on both sides of the A40, north and south, and in the central regulation. Some of them will be removed at the junction for safety reasons, obviously that's true. But the rest of the trees, can we make quite sure that neither county council nor any of them takes allow them legally? Because the perception, and we've heard a lot of it tonight, the perception is, well, whatever the technical habit is, the perception is if you can't see a road, it's well hidden by trees, then it helps you to live with the road.
Yes, exactly.
And I think it will apply to the new houses on Barton Park, just as much as it does to the existing houses. Can those trees be, can we be quite certain the minimum number of trees are taken away?
Thank you.
Can I apply and say, on the moment of the...
What we've asked of you, Mike, is that the bustling will be treated in terms of creating a L-shaped new barrier onto Foxwood Drive. And that will put trees in and planting to both enhance the safety of Foxwood Drive in terms of the bustling and also, you know, to put trees back. It was obvious you can't drive bustling through, you know, existing trees and you've got to create that gap.
But where is that bustling going?
That will be replaced by a planting scheme which will come on as a planting scheme.
What about the noise nuisance for the emergency vehicles that are going to come through Foxwood Drive and go down past Mary Clarkson's house? Because once those emergency vehicles come onto the estate, they will be going past Mary Clarkson's house and Copse Lane. No, but, no, you have not dealt with it, you haven't mentioned the noise nuisance from it.
We're on board with the scheme to actually improve the premium area.
You keep saying bustling, but it's not, it's emergency vehicles. It's all emergency vehicles off the A40.
You're not a councillor, you're having traffic lights, are you, and all the traffic stopping? That creates even more noise.
What I really want to do is to devote time, we have five minutes.
Devote time to Barton Park.
To the proposals here which are coming forward.
Of course you do, because it's your Barton Park. What about us?
Jane, is this about the...
Please discuss, yes.
Was it about the trees? I don't think we're going to get any further if you don't raise the trees.
You have just said that the trees don't provide a barrier against noise. Now, I won those trees in a national competition and pollution and noise was one of the ones on. I was the only person in Oxford who won it, and I planted them.
Jane, very much appreciate what's popped you in and put you through there.
And since those trees have gone, the noise is unbearable. Someone came to my house at the weekend and they thought that my doors were open at the back because the noise was at the back. We've got double glazing all the way back. And the noise is pouring and people come to their house and say, what has happened? Because they don't notice it.
We will have to address that.
And the other thing is...
We won't address it. I won't lock down more trees. We won't address it.
A proposal through the Parks Department to put new planting around...
Why don't you tell us this?
The other thing is, not only have we lost our trees, we are going to lose our fence. Why? Are you going to bring the spoil lobbies through there and into our estate to get rid of it?
No, no.
Did you know, once you break down that barrier, our children are being able to the A40? That, I hope the members and the people of that building, can I just say one thing before you carry on? In 1952, when the estate was built, and there was children playing on the estate... Let me speak, let me just say this and then I will finish. In 1952, when the estate was built, children were getting out onto the A40 through the way of a hedge. So they got onto the A40, some children were knocked down, I don't believe they were killed. And you can look at it in the minutes books of 1952. And these children were knocked down. So the Estates Committee, let me just finish, the Estates Committee decided to put up fencing, to put up fencing, and now you're taking that fencing down to risk the lives of our children. How are you going to make it safe? You can't make it safe. You don't want them to hear it, that's all it is.
We have a couple of minutes, members, any other questions?
Why don't they allow us to come?
Is my hand invisible?
Can a member of the public ask a question, please, Roy?
Oh, right, sorry, didn't notice.
I think he did. This is about the plans that you're showing us. You're showing us the buildings that are against the A40. They're all very large buildings. They are all going to bounce even more sound back across to the other side. We know that, it's effectively a sound wall which will bounce extra sound back. So even if you've reduced the speed to 50 miles an hour for part of that, there is going to be more noise coming across there. Is that something that your noise people have considered?
We can certainly ask that question to, I must admit, I'm like an acoustic expert, so I don't know the answer, but we can certainly ask. I mean, our building line is set about 25 metres from the A40, isn't it? And that's very specific, I think, in the outline consent, but we have to be a certain distance back.
And we have made a very serious effort not to build a wall because a wall would be the worst thing along A40. And having breaks between buildings or landscaping trees will, it also slightly, it diffuses the noise.
Sorry, did you say the trees were going to help stop the sound better?
New trees.
So new trees are going to stop sound? And yet we've just been assured that trees do not stop sound. And we have experienced ourselves, if you stand behind the trees, that's nice. If you stand behind...
Why don't you do a side sweep?
We've taken on board the issues about the tree cover and safety issues on the Foxwood Drive.
And the City Council will act on those issues. What about the safety barrier?
I'll just bring it back to the chief, is you have a legitimate question about whether...
Yeah, most certainly.
And I think, you know, we need to perhaps address that and to get some comments back as we go through the public concentration into the planning applications.
And can I just make another point? Are you aware that when they cut down these very precious trees on the other side of the road, there were birds nesting there, which is, which breaks the law because it's kind of...
And not relevant to this meeting.
It's relevant to these guys who come from the company who are building it. It is relevant. I think they would want to know that birds' nests were destroyed with X and...
No, that's not true.
Yes, they were. It's all true.
There are witnesses.
I'm bringing the pictures close. Seeing them come forward and to take our...
Our disgrace, we see, Doc. We'll do everything we can to fight it, this is not a matter of... You can sit there laughing, because when the government hears about this, they've already heard about this scandalous scheme and how dangerous it is to our children. You'll have a white, a smile, white face, and it's like that.
So, Georgina, what do you feel about this evening's meeting?
I felt it was an undemocratic meeting. But, okay, they're talking about plans, but it's all to do with Barton Park. They're talking about having lovely green space over there, having a water area. And you could see in the pictures that there was green space over there, when we're 17.5 hectares under provided and they're going to be taking more green space. So it's just not fair, really. And also, also I was dismayed when they actually spoke about protecting the residents on the Barton Park from noise nuisance. Not once have they been over to look at our estate. The noise nuisance is above 90 decibels now, when you stand right next to it, as you witnessed the other day. So they didn't want to talk about that. And then every time we wanted to talk about things that have effect on this development, you know, nobody wants to talk about Northway, let's not go there. Because if we go there, then it's going to be exposed that it's dangerous. Undemocratic, our own councillor, who's been supporting this harebrained scheme and plotting the devastation of Northway, has given no consideration to why the trees were planted. He's given no consideration to the feelings of the residents. And he's done everything he can to go against us. And our own county councillor, who deals with issues of roads and things, is aware it's a dangerous road, but he doesn't want to answer any questions about it and just wants us to roll over and not mention it. And then obviously, it's important for me to mention what are they going to put in, if they're going to take down this fence that was put up in 1952 for the safety of the children, what are they going to put in its place? Nobody wants to talk about it because they know that, once it's taken down and there's traffic coming through, they can't make it safe. So I just think it's an undemocratic meeting. We're invited to go there and yet they want to hush us up and they don't want us to speak.